We're ready and we're live.
Okay, welcome. This evening, we are KingstonCitizens.org and we're hosting the second of our educational forum panels this evening. Tonight, we're going to be focusing in on our common council and exploring the roles and of the Kingston's common council. And we're lucky tonight to have Deb Brown, who's the Ward Line Alderwoman and the Minority Leader of the Kingston Common Council, Jim Noble, who's the Alderman-at-Large in the City of Kingston, and Matt Dunn, who is the Ward One Alderman and the Majority Leader in the City of Kingston. Kingston Citizens is a nonpartisan citizen-run organization focused on relevant and current issues about Kingston and working to foster transparent communication by encouraging growing citizen participation. My name's Rebecca Martin and I'm one of the founders of KingstonCitizens.org. This evening, we're going to be moderated by Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey, who I'll introduce in a moment, but we have some citizens here this evening who will have a chance to ask questions. In order to do so, I just would like to ask that everyone please take three minutes total, so ask your question within a minute, no statements or statements. We want to ask questions this evening so that we get the most out of our panelists and we can learn as much as we can. And I'll be moderating the audience to keep that on track. I'd like to introduce Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey, who we're very lucky to have continuing this process of moderation for Kingston citizens and to be a Kingston citizen herself. Jennifer has 25 years' experience in the fields of architecture, conservation, economic development, and urban planning in the nonprofit, government, academic, and private sectors. Prior to launching Home Strategic, she served as Deputy Director of Ulster County Planning for over seven years, where she worked closely with legislators and the county executive. Before moving to Ulster County, she worked in Washington DC at the World Bank and the Urban Institute, at the University of Rome in Italy, and as a project manager of design and construction for New York City's major cultural institutions. Burkey has lived for extended periods in Argentina, Chile, France, Israel, Italy, and Spain. She earned a BA in art history from SUNY Stony Brook and a master's degree in urban planning and real estate development at Columbia University, where she is also currently completing a PhD in urban planning on the subject of environmental economics. So with that, I'll invite Jennifer to stand. Thank you. Let me just say two words, streaming live tonight and recording the session. It'll be made available on KingstonCitizens.org. And I'd like to thank Clark Ruppers for doing so tonight of Kingston News.
Good evening.
So enough about me. Let's hear about you.
Actually, the first question we'd like to ask you is about your professional backgrounds. If you could each just tell us a little bit about your life outside of City Hall and a little bit about how you became interested in doing the work of Alderman.
I guess I'm first.
Deb, I'm looking at Deb.
You're looking at me?
Please.
I'm a healthcare provider. That's why we have this. Okay, can you hear me? I am in the healthcare field. I'm a healthcare professional. I've been involved with that since about 1992. I started out as an EMT for New York State and I worked through the designations and became a certified medical assistant. It's a two-year degree and we worked mostly in physicians' offices and were advocate for the patients and way of information, education. If patients didn't have questions, they usually asked me and I in turn would give them the details, which is kind of like what I said right into becoming a councilman. I'm an advocate for the people in my ward and I figured the healthcare field was a good segue into that. So that's mine.
Hi, I'm currently a fully employed contractor in the City of Kingston. Prior to that, I've probably been doing this role for probably 20 years. Prior to that, I, I won't go right into that, I used to work for a construction company. They made commercial breakers on Cornell Street, Wondell. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. They're still there. And my role there was I was an installer and I'd go out and measure, you know, usually commercial hotels all around the United States and actually outside the United States. So the reason I became involved in politics was, you know, I traveled extensively, sometimes 30, 39 days at a clip and then I'd always come back to Kingston where the home court was. And I'd always come to the same, I said, "God, this place never changes." And it was always like the same thing, especially I used to come walk the material and look at that building and I was like, "God, can't they do anything?" So to make a long story short, I moved from that job into my current job and, you know, I got involved in politics and I actually became a committeeman, which, you know, that's like for a party. I mean, all the city itself personally exactly is divided into nine wards and all of the different wards have three districts except the fourth ward, this ward which only has two. And each district has two people from the major party that represents that district. So a normal district would have six committee people and this ward would have four, because it only has two districts. So I became involved in that and actually I became the chairman of the Democratic Committee. And then after that, I ran for office and, you know, so it was like the process. And then on the way to that, I was like eight years zoning Board of Appeals. I don't know if you're familiar with that. You know, just to try and get involved in things. You know, I wasn't really looking to become an elected official in the beginning. I was more looking to get involved in the city and see if I could help out at all. And then I was also at the same time on the Community Development Commission, which is still current today and for four years. So after those, you know, you know, interests of being involved, I decided to run for office.
Thank you. This was wonderful story.
I'm sorry, I'm also a father and a grandfather, lifelong resident.
I got into the whole discipline.
I know, but you can still do it.
I'm a mother, a grandmother.
And that's a wonderful story because it shows how engagement starts with right around you.
Small steps and you just involve, you know, pretty much without even your knowing it, you're getting more involved in the different realms of the city and the politics.
That's great. Thank you.
For my day job, I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for approximately 10 years. I started out as a public defender and I worked with, here in Ulster County, I was a public defender for a while down in the southern parts of Ulster County. Worked with Lou Klein for a while, doing asset protection, working with elderly people. And now I represent, I work with a firm down in New Paulson. We represent employees who are not paid overtime or the minimum wage. We bring large class actions and collective actions under federal law. So we represent literally thousands of people who are underpaid and taken advantage of by their employers across the country. And we sue small companies, we sue large companies, whether they're Fortune 500 companies or whatever it may be, to help hardworking, blue collar employees recover their wages. I'm also, I'm married, I have two daughters. I have a two-year-old and a 10-year-old and a, and one of the things that I enjoy doing is, is an activity is certainly exercising as much as I can, whether it's cycling or running marathons. I needed to get that in there.
That's obvious.
Yeah, I have to do it in order to deal with everything going on inside for myself. But regardless, I got involved because I think it's important to be involved with community. It's important to give back, especially if you're in a position where you can give back and if you do have the time and you have that availability. So I decided I started out working on an advisory committee for Ulster County on the Compensation Committee and then I got involved with the City of Kingston in the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. After that, I met with, I remember meeting with Tom Hoffa and Frank Cardinelli and they were looking for people to run and certainly I saw it as another opportunity to get involved with Kingston and to hopefully provide some assets or my thoughts and advocacy to the city. So from there, I became Alderman after a lot of hard work in the county and knocking down a lot of doors.
Great.
And I know Deb, that you were very much involved in ward politics before you ran.
Yeah, Rebecca. Ward nine.
I'm just showing you that.
I hope you don't mind if I call you by your first name.
No, I'm Deb. No, I got involved with the Ward Nine. We had some issues going on at the ward and Rebecca organized the neighborhood and we used to meet at the old coffee shop there, which is now a pizza place, I guess, or no, it's a pharmacy now. And from out of there, I listened to the concerns. I was asked if I would mind auditing the council meetings and I said, "Okay, my kids were grown, I had the time." So I audited all the city council meetings and the committee meetings. I spoke at public speaking. I got familiar with the process, how the parties work, how you pass legislation, you know, how to make your voice known. And then I would come back to the Ward Nine meetings and report what was going on. And then from there, I decided, I think I should run for office. I can, you know, I'm used to doing this on a day basis with patients. So it was just, now it's working with the residents. And I am a mother and a grandmother, like I said before, I have two children that went through Kingston High School. Unfortunately, when they graduated from college, they went separate ways, one's in Boston and one's in Seattle, so. But no, I finally had time to get involved with politics because I figured I didn't have any children anymore and I had the time.
So actually, I'm glad that you pointed that out because the Ward Nine meetings were the, really the birth of KingstonCitizens.org, which Rebecca began when there were issues like stop signs and traffic and the citico, the gas station selling knives. And this is the early history of activism on the part of Kingston citizens and Rebecca. And the Ward Nine meetings were an opportunity to create a forum to talk about issues that perhaps the public needed to know about, starting with the assessments, right? The knives that were being sold in that store or what is a comprehensive plan, which we are now in the process of completing today. So it's great. So how, tell us a little bit about how, first of all, how long have you held your position as Alderman and what is the, what was the process you went through to become Alderman? Jim, you want to start?
Okay. Yeah, well, I was an Alderman for the sixth ward for five years. Then at the time, Mayor P.R. Gallow passed away, so I became Alderman-at-Large by a vote of the council majority. That's the process, you know, if somebody moves up, then they vote. Then after that, I ran for the office and I've been doing that for eight, I should have known this right. Probably seven, twelve years. But prior to that, I, you know, as the councilman, I was like chairman of finance, probably say the majority leader, you know. So I had extended, you know, myself through the chairs of the council, you know, and I've run for that position.
That's great. You've got experience in every aspect of the council.
Yeah, pretty much, you know, and, you know, that's why, you know, I'm kind of okay with that role because I kind of know all the facets of it as far as, you know, especially like this year, it's been very difficult because a lot of the newer Aldermen, and my opinion is that to be an Alderman, it probably takes you at least two years to realize, you know, the role of what's expected, what the procedures are, having to get legislation through the committee system and into the legislature to pass. You know, so it's quite involved, you know, a lot of people think it's, you know, we should just go and do this, but, you know, there's a lot of work to involve, a lot of research, you know, getting, you know, to get, you know, your peers who, pretty with you, to enact certain legislation, you know, so it takes time, it takes work, you know, it takes, you know, people working together, nonpartisan, you know, environment, you know, so pretty much.
It truly is public service.
Yeah, I mean, it's a part-time job with full-time hours. You're just like, you're never out of the job. I mean, it's, you know, you have your own life, you know, you have your job, your own business, and then you have, you know, continually, you know, it's just become more of us since I first started now because like, yeah, instant communications, it's just like overwhelming. I mean, you cannot keep up with the amount of, by emails and questions coming at you and trying to get back because you have to research stuff, you have to talk to the department head, you have to do your own research to come back. And sometimes, you know, you'll, you'll get the answers, but you already put it through the process and you'll forget to maybe notify the person that had the interest in it, you know what I mean? But you, it's just, it's a lot, just beat it up, like, you know, the whole process.
And one of the things, I think what Jim was talking about earlier was that, one of the things that Jim adds, which is invaluable, is the institutional knowledge, you know, he's been there for a while, which, you know, we have a number of, as he was pointing out, you know, the number of Aldermen who's, this is their second term and then, and some of that's their first term and others are returning. So we lost a lot of institutional knowledge with the outgoing Aldermen from last year, which it, that's a huge asset and in order to really evaluate what decisions we're going to make on any number of issues. So for Jim to offer that background is a huge, is a huge asset. This is my second term as Alderman. I'm starting my third year. And was part of your question, how do you get elected to become Alderman?
I think we're, a lot of people are interested probably in finding out, Jim described a little bit about the committee system.
Right.
Any part of it you'd like to describe?
Sure. So, so at least, and I'm assuming it's the same for the Republican side, but maybe it's not.
Mine was a different one.
Maybe it's different. But certainly, the processes that you meet with the committee for the ward, that committee then goes through a nominating process and makes a recommendation to the Democratic Committee and possibly the Republican Committee.
I think it's set up now that it goes to the ward.
That's right, the ward chairs.
Of the committeeman of that district.
That's right.
So there'd be six people deciding who their candidate was.
The executive committee, and then they recommend another candidate committee. Well, that's how it is in the Republican.
Right.
Our is kind of reversed. We start at the lower level. Then we bring it up to the city committee that, when they have their convention to go and nominate an individual, you know, sometimes recommended by the committee or not. Sometimes the convention or somebody will say, "Okay, I'm interested in running also," to put his own name out there for the committee to decide. So you could have one that's endorsed by the committee or an individual of this field, like, "Well, I want to run too, even though I wasn't nominated or chosen. I want an opportunity to go before my city Democrats say and have them choose which one they think are better." And then if it doesn't work out, you have an option to go and say, "Okay, well, I'm going to primary." And it's, you know, my opinion again, it seems that the primary is now becoming almost the norm instead of the exception. It used to be, you know, primaries were very rare. The city party pretty much dictated who was going to be the standard bearer for their ward or whatever. But now, it's like primaries all the time and it's like, I think it'll be a continual trend.
And Matt, was that your experience or, sorry?
Well, in addition to that, you also need to go out and get your signature. So if you do have a primary, you have to go out and get enough signatures so that you can get on the Democratic line in order to run for that party line. And then, you know, ultimately, the voters decide whether or not you're going to prevail on that line or not. And you may, some people may choose to go for multiple lines, whether it's the Working Families Independence Party or the Republican line. So, but that's certainly part of the process. And then obviously whoever prevails, we move on to the general election and...
And one other option, if none of the major party lines wants to endorse you, you always have the option of creating your own line, running on your own party.
Clark, can you pick up the voices when the mic isn't in front of them for the audience at home?
Mr. Dunn is good. Debbie's a little low, a low.
Okay, so speak closely to the mic once your turn.
Okay, mine was completely different from the process. I had been doing, I had been auditing a lot of the committee meetings, which I advise you to do if you're going to run for public office. You need to know the issues. You just can't show up and say, "I'm going to run," and then expect to learn on the job. It's not always the best way to do it. Do your homework. And I attended, like I said, the meetings for almost two years, went to the committee meetings and I did a lot of public speaking. At the time, I was a registered Democrat for 40 years, but I was raised Republican. And I, much to my parents' chagrin, I joined the Democratic Party, but it was basically to tick my parents off because I was during the Vietnam War. So, dumb me, so I thought, "Here I have it, peace." So anyway, but, but basically, I still had some of the Republican ideals. And what happened was, I was approached by the Republican Party, still as a registered Democrat, to run on Republican ticket. So I said, "Let me think about it." And at that time, I said, "Oh, okay." You know, I did, then eventually, to be a committeeman, I had to, I had to become a Republican. So I eventually changed to be a Republican. I would say though, in issues around the city, I don't look at it as a Republican issue or Democratic issue because there's so many parties within my ward. And I don't, and I think, I've surprised you sometimes that I didn't vote, quote unquote, "the Republican way." I've heard that sometimes. But, but I vote for what the people in the ward want. I mean, I have to represent all parties. And I would say we're pretty bipartisan, not bipartisan on the city council. But like I said, mine was a little bit different way. But now I'm a committeeman, I'm a Republican committeeman and I am involved with the process for, you know, getting candidates. But yeah, you do have to go out and petition. There's a percentage of votes you have to get based on how many enrolled.
5%.
5% of the enrolled people in your party, in your ward, which I take issue at sometimes because I don't think the Board of Elections has the true numbers. Because when I was out petitioning, a lot of those people no longer live there. They're deceased, they've left, and in the area, we have a lot of renters, that can happen. But either way, you have to go by 5% of what the Board of Elections has listed as the voters. It's a lot of day work, hot summer days, after you work all day, then you go out in the campaign and you answer questions at the door. You leave your brochure, which is part of the expense aspect of it. And going back to the primaries, that really adds to the cost because now you have to run a primary campaign and then you have to turn around and do an election. A lot of times, your literature has to change based on what parties you've been elected to or endorsed by, so. But I basically would say, if you want to run, know the city, do your homework, come to some meetings ahead of time, talk to people. If you have a ward meeting in your neighborhood, get involved with that and then you get to discuss the issues and what really concerns people.
And ultimately, there's really a political process and electoral process, so, and you have to be able to navigate both avenues successfully in order to, it helps to navigate both avenues successfully in order to prevail.
So you mentioned the cost, Deb. What did it, what do you think the range is? I mean, not specifically you, but what would you guys say the range is to run a campaign?
The first, the first time I ran, I lost and I spent probably, oh, anywhere from about $750 to $1,500. And then the second time I ran, then I went more into the print, the newspapers, bigger brochures, I did a couple of mailings. You give out, you know, pens and pads and you tend a lot of functions and that's part of the cost too. You go to a lot of different meetings. And then I would say the third, the third election, it's about the same thing, it went up a little bit more, it was anywhere from $1,500 to $2,500.
But it's also a great deal of your time.
It's a lot, yeah, a lot of your time. Definitely, if you, if you don't want to do the time, this is probably not what you're going to want to do because in addition to voting, you just don't sit down to meet and they present you a resolution, you read, "Okay, this agrees with me." No, you have to do your homework. I don't know how many times I Googled different municipalities, find out what they did. If I'm thinking about legislation, what did another city do? You try to do it within New York State because that's where the governing body is from that you're, you know, working for. But I also do other communities to see how they address the situation. And like I said, I read, I read a lot and I Google a lot. And if you're not up for reading and doing like homework again, like you were in high school, college, this isn't for you because you're going to be expected to know the answers when people ask you, "Why did you vote this way?" And you have to be able to explain. But like I said, it's a lot of homework after hours.
So Jim, you mentioned the learning curve and your particular experience, which is been 12 years as Alderman-at-Large, right? But you were also Alderman before that.
Five years.
So, and the idea that it takes at least a term to even just learn the job, what are your thoughts on, you know, as to all of these, what are your thoughts on term limits for Aldermen?
Well, my opinion is, my experience is, when the Alderman has done what he's set out to do, he's pretty much ready to retire and resign anyway, you know what I mean? So I think it's like an automatic reaction that when they reach a certain point of, say, effectiveness or wanting to go to meetings or being involved, then they'll pretty much say, "All right, that is not bad enough." You know, but the ones, in my opinion again, seriously, the ones that have more experience, they can come and fire up a meeting like nobody's business. And, you know, agree or not agree with him, at least he's bringing out a discussion that way. Never appear certain things that he knows from five, six years ago that you can't do that, you've been through this, I know you can't, this is why, and then they'll generate this whole big discussion. He'll go the other way and say, "Yes, you can do this, we've gone back at this incident" and that kind of thing, you know what I mean? So, you know, like, we don't have any now, except myself when I'm the only one. And, you know, the main reason I ran last time was because I knew this was going to happen. There would be nobody, you know, with any experience. The mayor was coming in new and he'd be bringing in new, you know, people with him. So it was like, really not a lot of people that had the knowledge other than the department heads, you know, the department heads really kind of get into that area of legislation and that. So it was just me at the end of time, you know what I mean, to stay and to help them. And I hope, you know, you guys agree that it was good having me there too.
Yeah, because Robert's Rules of Orders, I had to.
Well, yeah, and that's one aspect of running meetings, you know, you certainly the form you have to maintain and, you know, just to make sure the information is available, you know, and I know pretty much all, just reaching out to the department head and getting information and, you know, getting things ready for the council meetings or the committee meetings and things like that, that, you know, did you call them, did I say, "No, did you do that?" Questions like that, that I know they need to be here, you know, and they should be involved in, you know, that type of things. So I'm under the opinion, at least in the council part of it, that I don't have any problem with people with longevity or, you know, longer amount of time here because I think they realize, and as you can see, there's been such a turnover. If I looked at all the people that were Aldermen, I'm like, "Wow, I've got 50 people that might have gone through." You know, just, you know, they come, they, like I said, usually they're prompted by something that's really, you know, going in their side or something that they want to come in and they want to work on and see if they can do that and improve it or do something for the city or whatever the issue might be. But once that's accomplished and they really don't have any other interest, they'll usually fade out.
Matt, Deb, do you agree about term limits that pretty much takes care of itself?
I think if, if people don't like who their Alderman, Alderman-at-Large, or the mayor, who's on the vocal level, they don't like who that person is, they should step up and advocate for change and they should do something about it, whether it's running for the position themselves or mobilizing others to do it. And if they're in the majority and if they have the support of the community, you will have that change. Now, could there be some benefits to having term limits? I suppose there are, but at the same time, I'm a firm believer that if you want change, you have to be active in seeking it and really to get the community involved to support your cause or to support the change that you want. At this level, because we have a relatively young council, I don't think we need it in this present situation. And if we did have term limits and if Jim's position had been term limited, we would have been at, I think, at a significant disadvantage because we would not have that seniority in, on the council. And that would certainly be a detriment to us because it's always helpful to have that senior statesman and all that information to really help you be the most effective and efficient council and advocate for the city that you can be. that really helped you be the most effective and efficient council and advocate for the city that you can be.
Right now, at this point in time, I'm sitting on the fence, because at one time, I was for term limits. I mean, we do have, just looking at, one of the questions is, why don't people vote in the city, the sense of apathy? If you don't have a lot of people coming up to represent you, or, or getting involved, there is nobody. And then you kind of, kind of have to stay with what you have on the current, you know, whatever the current council is. But on the other hand, if you have the same people know over and over on the council, then people in the, in the neighborhood, and the city start to feel discouraged, and, "Well, what, 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 excuse me, what difference does it make? Because nothing's gonna change," and then you have that end of the, of the apathy also.
But didn't you have something like seven or so people running against you in that recent?
Well, the last one, well, independent Democrat, I don't know how many of parties, I was trying to concentrate on my own, my own party, getting through that. But yeah, it was like, they threw up three or four different people.
And there were a lot more who wanted to, I remember.
There was, there was a lot more that, that was, but when it comes right down to the decision, it comes down to a sense of money, you know, how, how really dedicated they really were, were they just trying to make a statement in running, which I think sometimes can happen. But looking, looking back now, and like I said, I sit on both sides of the fence, I'm being in the position now, yeah, that there's, there's so many things I wanna do, and I may not be able to do it, and say, if they did a term limit of three terms, you know, in six years. But then again, maybe you could, you know, it all depends on what coworkers you have on the council, and if you can get a consensus and, and get it done. But if you're constantly fighting, you know, to get an issue, then you may have to stay another term. They'll say, "Gee, maybe somebody new will come on the next council, maybe I can work with them." So, it's, like I said, I, I was once adamant about term limits, but looking now, I have to rethink it. But right now, I've had two terms, so I, I just feel like, so me being on for ten years, no fair. I mean, ten, ten, I mean, ten two-year terms, just twenty years is a little bit too much. I think after, after that, you've lost your, your will to do anything different, you just basically are there, and I, I think you run out of ideas. And I think sometimes that can be passed down to the constituents, they go, "Oh, he's there, okay, it's the same old, same old." And that just kind of spirals and goes downhill from them, you get that, that empathy, empathy going on, so, apathy, sorry.
Well, it seems as though, as Matt described, it's sort of been an organic process that's taken care of itself, at least on this level. Obviously, term limits are different for the roles of government, and the benefits, I'd say, that you might have.
I just think voters aren't as dumb as you think they are. They know who they want in office, who they don't want in office. And I, and if you look at the last couple of races, they've been very close to, you know, six votes, one over the other. I mean, there's a lot of close races, so when people are undecided, it's just, we look at the voter registration, you know, when they come in, they, they have it all on computer, they can tell who voted the last ten presidential elections. They know who votes and who doesn't vote. How you get those people out to vote, I have no idea, believe me. The Democrats tried, because their own party people don't even come out to vote, so they're trying, they're trying, they're sending them, they're knocking, they're calling. But, you know, they just, it's not, I don't, I think.
Let somebody else do it. And is, is it generally higher in the general, when there's general elections, is the turnout much better?
It's better, if you're a presidential congressman.
I, I, I think it's, you, you have to take into consideration that you have, at least in my ward, you, you have about a third of the, the registered voters are, are Democrats. Roughly a fifth or a quarter are Republicans, and then there, there's some other percentage that is, is working families and, and, and independent parties. And then you have, and conservatives, and then you have a third that, that's not affiliated with any party. So, they can't vote in a primary, so you're not going to have that. You, you may have a lower, you may have a lower showing for, for the party line, but in terms of overall voting, you have a significant block of voters that are not affiliated with a party, and just don't vote in, in, in the primary, which, which can have a significant impact on, on an election, or a primary, as we've seen in the recent past.
So, what are the numbers of registered, just approximately, in each ward, of registered voters?
I, one thousand five hundred and twenty-five.
In yours?
Listed, but not viable.
I have about the same number.
Whenever we do the district, we try to make it a single swing.
And did that, what was the percentage turnout of those?
Well, mine, just looking at the board, it was like, one by four, and I think it totaled, it added up to a total, I think it came out to maybe seven hundred fifty actually came out and polled. So, if you base it on, on, probably fifty percent of, you know, of the fifteen, twenty-five, so it's seven fifty.
Well, that's not too bad.
That, for, that was a good year. I know in previous years, no, it was like, maybe five hundred, five hundred, four hundred people came out. In previous, so that was even about the same, but, yeah, I noticed that was the difference.
I remember being number ninety-three at ten to nine PM, and the primary.
Yeah.
In my ward.
Well, it's low.
So, very low for the primary. So, moving on, actually, I'm very interested in having you discuss the difference between what you do as an Alderman-at-large, and then the roles of Aldermen, just in general. For example, how do you work with one another, and how do you work with the city government staff, the executive? Why don't you start, since your role is different, Jim?
Well, my role would be, you know, part facilitator, part, if, if you had an issue with the city, you, then you wanted some kind of legal legislation, possibly some kind of change, zoning change, whatever. You would send a communication to the council, and that communication would come to me. So, I would get that communication, and then I would look at it, put it in the appropriate committee, that it would be refined, sales people, public safety, you know, Aldermen, community development. And then, that would go to the committee, you know, that was gonna act on it. The way it works is, there's a committee meeting once a month, on a specific date in the month, that the different committees meet. And every committee has a chairman, and that chairman would get the communications. And theoretically, he would be the, and go through the law, and make sure that, you know, he had enough information, like the people in, you know, and stuff like that. And I would work with him, you know, they would call me, "Well, just the agenda." And my, my other role would be to make sure that what I received went to their committee, and it would be on their agenda, so they wouldn't, like, add different things to the agenda, because it's important, because the deadline for any communications that were going to be acted on would be four o'clock of the meeting night. So, if I didn't receive a communication before four o'clock, that would have to wait to the following month. So, if we got it before that, then I would make sure that that was in committee, and, you know, it would go to the different committees. And I would look at it, and make sure it was okay. And then the committee would get it, vote on it, and then they would, you know, get the committee reports, and, you know, and make sure they're accurate and everything. And then they would go to the council. Prior to that, there would be, that's, council is the first Tuesday of every month, and seven thirty. And then prior to that, there's a caucus, where we, we'd have a Democratic caucus, where all the committee legislation would come to that caucus. And Matt, as the majority leader, would chair that, and he would go through, I don't, I don't wanna take your word.
No, no, you're great, oh, you keep going, keep going.
And he would go through all the, what we, through committee legislation, and try to get a consensus from all the council meetings. And usually, there's a Democratic-Republican caucus, but since we're going on, we.
Call that.
She meets with us. So, it's like a joint caucus, so it's like the little preliminary before the council vote. And people, you know, the Aldermen can discuss it, and if they have questions, they'll ask back and forth. Or maybe if they wanna table something for more information, they would do that. So, it's like a preliminary. It, it doesn't mean how you're gonna vote or anything at the council, because I've seen many times where you go through the caucus, "Oh, yeah, I'm okay with that." And then they come to the council meeting, and they vote totally opposite of what they were talking about. But, and then, I would preside over the council meeting. And, you know, we have the council at seven thirty, we do different things. We have the rules of order that we follow with that handbook, which we haven't had for two years, for whatever reason. But, you know, the handbook, you know, pretty much tells you what the order, you know, you read the minutes, you do, like, pay the bills, and then you go through a list of legislation, one at a time, starting with finance, and they go down that one. Then they would vote on that, and I'd preside over that, you know, if there's any questions, amendments, anything like that, so, so that would all be done. And they keep records, of course, of the vote, the voter line. Then that goes through, and then finally gets through the meeting, and, you know, local laws are at the end, and they vote on that. So, that, that's pretty much the process. So, so my role would be, get the legislation, you know, the communications, distribute it, make sure it's being, you know, given the proper due in committee, answer any questions that the committee people might have, help them out any way I can, and then go into the council meeting for the final vote. So, that, and.
Jim is our manager.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good way to put it, you know? So, you know, and if there's any real questions or anything, I can probably get the answers for you.
And so, how do, how do the rest of the Aldermen work together with, have you, what is your part in this process? In terms of, obviously, I mean, just for the public to understand, your.
One last thing.
Oh, yes.
I, I decide who the committee members are also. So, I'll divide the council up of the nine members, and, and try and work around in this committee, and nominate, or, you know, pick the chairman, to, to try and, you know, make it a rounded committee, pretty much.
Is everyone happy with their?
Never, never, never happy.
Well, I, I am, because I'm on all of them.
Yeah, you're one of them.
And I go to all of them.
Man, we can change that if you want.
You're running while you have so much work to do.
I'm happy the committee's on.
I know, you told me that. Oh, and then I, I also have liaison appointments. So, you know, liaison would be, say, we say we have the water board. So, I appoint an Alderman, and he would sit on the water board when they had their meetings, or planning, or zoning, or whatever. Or, and there's probably twenty-some, if not more. And then we have the little subcommittees, like.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, comprehensive plan, so.
And consolidated services was last, was last year.
So, so we have other committees, other than those committees also, that, you know, they go to, and when they're not doing regular Alderman duties, they sit in as liaisons, and usually they have two or three liaison appointments each.
So, that's, I like the way you describe it as a manager role, because it sounds like it's very integrated.
And, and it has to be, it, it has to be integrated, because the, the, the president of the council, Jim, has to know what's going on, and, and not only for the council purposes, but also because he's next in line in case the mayor were to, 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 to stepped out, or not complete his term, or if he's just not available. So, Jim, or the president of the council, needs to know everything that's happening in, in order to be prepared in case he had to assume that role. And, and we've had that experience, so it's vital.
I mean, I think.
That's right.
One incident, so, or two, it's on vacation, when the mayor's at, oh, yeah, when, that was a rare event, yeah.
So, actually, last session, we talked about different types of charter, different constructions of different charters, the, the manager system, or the, and it almost sounds, sounds as though that role, and I don't want, only focus, obviously, on the Alderman-at-large, I'm interested in hearing about how is this, if you are knowledgeable of the charter, how does your job, how, how does your job description in the charter compare to your actual job? Maybe Deb, you would say?
I, I will do that.
It's pretty vague, isn't it?
She likes picking things up.
I, I do my homework, I, I research, and it's one paragraph. No way does it describe what we do, because if I could get everything in one paragraph, what I do would be wonderful, but no. But, you want me to read what it says?
Sure.
It's only one paragraph. It says, "Each Alderman of said city shall attend the regular and special meetings of the common council, act upon committees when thereto appointed, report to the mayor and all subordinate officers who are guilty of official misconduct or neglect, and maintain peace and good order in the city, perform or assist in performing all duties enjoined upon the Alderman of said city separately or upon the council thereof." That's it.
Well, a- a- actually, the charter, it goes on, and it talks about the duties of the common council.
Right, but not the individual.
And those duties, it doesn't talk about the individual duties, but it talks about the duties of the common council, and that includes the Alderman. And those duties, I, I think are fairly, they're, they're general, it's fairly comprehensive, and it does, for the most part, accurately describe our duties, whether it's to, to pass a city policy, whether it's for the efficient and economical management, or, or, with the management of the, of the city, whether it's passing new ordinances, or, or laws, setting fines. It, it lists a whole host of things.
Finances.
That's correct, that's correct. And, and, and so, I, I think it's fairly comprehensive. It also gives the council.
Oh, it is.
It also gives the council the power to investigate the books and the various papers from, from administration.
It, this is like a header, because it says, "Insist on performing all duties enjoined upon the Alderman of said city." So, that one goes into more detail, but if you want to specific what they have in the charter, Aldermen, that's exactly what this is.
Right, so that's just the, in your official capacity as an individual versus your charge.
As a council, that's right.
And by the way, for the public, it's available online at City Government. Just go to the website and apply the charter right under, I believe it's under City Government or Government.
You click on.
Right, it's on the government part.
City Charter and Codes, you just drop it down.
And then if you're really interested, you can read the administrative code.
Yeah, that's the book.
To do here, everybody.
You can quiz that.
So, any more you'd like to say about the roles as Aldermen, or how you, you know, to help us understand a little bit more about how you work? Less in the process, and more of the, what you think the, what the meaning of this role?
I can, I can tell you pretty much the Alderman role, too, because, not for, you know, but I mean, just in general. You know, they're the coaches to the residents, so they, they pretty much enter parochial to the areas they live in, as well as generally for the city. So, they're like the first line, say, to communicate. And if somebody had an issue, and they saw, I'm, I'm sure they know where Matt lives, they would come to Matt's house and say, "Hey, Matt, you know, can you do anything about this sewer over here flow," or something. And he would handle that part. So, there's a lot of that, and signage, and, you know, parks, you know, stop signs, or problems in parks, you know, all that stuff. You know, like, they, they deal with that every day. And then, there's the other part, and, you know, they have something that they're interested in, they wanna do an initiative, like quality of life issues, or energy, or the environment, you know, you know, anything like that. Then they take the initiative and the lead to work on that, to bring it to a committee, and to shepherd it to.
So, how do you choose, and you, sorry, you wanna do?
No, I was gonna say, I mean, just following up on what Jim was saying, we're, we're really advocates for the ward, but we're also advocates for the city, and to figure out how we can, you know, work best for the people that we represent, and, and, and for the people that elected us, and, and really push forward policy and changes that, that we need within the city, or to reinforce policies, and, and various items in the city. For example, we saw that our city lighting costs were rising every year, and, and they had increased, I was like, tens of thousands of dollars in, over the past, o- o- over the past several years. And we were spending hundreds of thousands, we were spending five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in, in twenty thirteen for our city lights. We have a climate action plan, the climate action plan that, that the council passed and adopted. It called for, it called for changes to, to upgrade our city lights to LEDs, which in turn would result in a significant cost savings. That's something that we advocated for, and we're gonna have significant cost savings once it's implemented, and we're still in the process of doing that, of, of cost saving to residents, and we're going to carry through with our policy that, that we adopted for, to be a, a, a more sensitive and environmentally responsible community.
So, that's a very interesting example, because that's one that maybe the public wouldn't know unless they followed the budget. So, how do you generally decide, choose the issues that you would like to pursue? Some of them are obviously based on, as you described, what's best for the people. What happens when people come to you with issues? How do you decide whether or not to pursue those, if they're big policy issues, for example?
Well, I, I think a lot of those happen already. I mean, we're, we're probably a little slow, I might say, on our environmental issues. So, you know, we have environmental educators, and they came to us years back, you know, to establish the climate action plan, adopt the energy, smart community, establish CAC, you know, and, you know, we said, "Well, it makes sense," you know, and then we're in the single street now. And actually, we're ahead of a lot of communities now, because, you know, we're, we're embracing this energy, and, you know, thinking about it long-term, and the conditions now, I mean, there's not a lot of grand money out there, or there. there's not a lot of grand money out there or there is grand money for green initiatives. So that's kind of what we're doing, you know, like we've got trash cans and things like that and the money for new packers, you know, we would never have been able to get that without, you know, embracing that and bringing that in and, you know, things like that, which...
By like CAC is the Conservation Advisory Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
There, there's also, I, I think there are, there are issues that, that you hear from your res, from the residents in your ward and, and for example, one of the issues that I remember when I was campaigning for my first term, a, a lot of business owners were talking about the discrepancy between the business tax and the residence tax. And, and it, it was an unknown, we needed some more information and, and so that's something that I committed myself to work on. And as a result, we finally have a, a report that, that describes the, some of the ramifications or the consequences of having this discrepancy. So it's, you, you, so you hear issues from, from the residents. You also hear stuff from items that you have to react to, such as the LED lighting issue with, with increasing city costs. In addition, sometimes people call for, like, two years ago, the mayor and, and then majority leader Tom Hoffa called for ethics reform because our current, our past ethics legislation was very, it, it was weak. And so the, there are these, these issues that crop up from time to time that you react to and, and, and you run with it. And, and so as a result, we then, the council ended up passing and adopting some significant ethics reform, which hopefully at the end of the day makes our, our government officials more responsible.
Deb, can you describe an issue that you...
Sure. The one issue that I don't think a lot of people were aware of was that the flooding on Andrew Street had been going on for quite a few years and it was kind of like a quiet little secret and the neighborhood dealt with it. When I became alderman, one of the first things that was discussed at the alderman, uh, we have a ward 9, um, second, second Thursday of every month, was the flooding. And about that time, Sophie Finn was going to be closed down and I remember there was meetings on what to do with the building and as you know, Ulster Community College is making it one of the satellites. And one of the issues I raised at the public meeting was that if you're going to be building this and you have to address, you have to address the runoff issues, um, the traffic issues, uh, which, which was significant to, because of the hospital being there and school buses previous to Sophie Finn, but the big thing was the water and I wanted them to be aware of that. And so they went back and did additional studies, um, to say they're going to put in permeated pavers, they could address the storm drain issue, some of the things they can't, which is connected to Kingston High School, and that's another ongoing issue there. But at least with the new school coming in, they're addressing and, and eliminating a lot of that water runoff into the basement. So I, I figured that was a success for the ward nine because I really advocated for it. And plus I didn't want an empty building in the midst. I mean, there were several different things that were talked about to make Sophie Finn into, one was possibly the hospital would take it over, but the hospitals don't have the money. Um, the other one I suggested was that with the nursing program at Ulster Community College, what an ideal place to put the nursing, um, education in there because they would do their, um, their clinical training across the street and then come back to the classroom. But either way, it became a, um, a satellite of the college, which I was very pleased. But in addition to that, the water runoff has been, um, adjust, has been addressed and they're really, um, paying attention to that and I, I said that was a good thing.
Well, and speaking of the environmental funding that Jim mentioned, there is more and more money to address those kinds of issues, uh, including green infrastructure.
I mean, I'd like to see us go sour, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, exactly.
And then we have the, we also have the rail trail coming through a good part of Ward Nine too, which I was an advocate for. It's finally coming to fruition, it's moving faster, but it, it meanders through Nine, parts of Midtown, but the part that's really going to be moving forward quickly is probably going to be the Ward Nine aspect of, of the railway, the rail trail.
So when community groups, um, are interested in, uh, issues like the rail trail or environmental or other, other questions, um, how does, how does that work its way into your process?
Hey, what, go ahead. Usually, you know, you'll have a communication with them somehow, either by voice or by email or something to that effect. And then you'll look at it, you know, myself personally, anything I get goes in committee because it, it's worthy of discussion. They, they took the time to write it, it's going in committee. So that's how I would usually proceed. I mean, there's other ways where, you know, like, you just, general government, general things happening, like, say the comprehensive plan. I mean, I was talking to Sue about it one day and she says, yeah, we really need one. I said, I know, it's been a long time. She said, yeah. I said, what, is, is it 450,000, 500,000, it's okay, they're telling me the cost will be. She says, I don't know, let me go and see if I can get, uh, some kind of price from some consultants that I know would just give me a price. Comes back $100,000. Okay, let's find a way to pay for it. So then we found out that it could be a bonding issue, so that started the whole process, just like something simple like that, you know? It's like a conversation.
Do you want to bring an example of the community pinkeye?
Yeah, I, I think, I think there have been several, um, really nice examples of, of, of community involvement. One was the Hudson Valley Senior Residents. And I, I received so many letters from, from people who wanted that facility saved and, and maintained so that seniors who needed a place to live could still had a home. And they showed up to, they showed up to council meetings, they showed up to committee meetings, they, they wrote us letters, they called, they, they called the aldermen and by having that public pressure and, and that public involvement, I think ultimately they got a result that, that they didn't, the, the senior residents didn't go away, it ended up surviving even though it changed hands, but it, it turned into a, a success story. We're seeing the same issue with the BMX track lease where you had, where you have a bunch of kids who just want to ride their bikes and the lease expired and, and the people who are involved in that issue, they showed up to a council meeting and they're advocating for, for their lease renewal. We also saw with the GWPTO and the community development funds. And, and while that was ultimately not successful in, in, in continuing to, uh, ha, maintain the funds, their involvement raised awareness and hopefully awareness for their project. But it also showed the, the, the level of, of dedication that the community has to a project and, and as a result, had continued council support for the project. And, and so those are some of the success stories and frankly, even if I don't agree, just to see people involved is, is, is spectacular.
One, um, one aspect to show was a community-based level was, um, the comprehensive plan that was discussed in the Ward Nine meetings many years ago. And I think I ran the first time on the comprehensive plan, we, we needed to have a comprehensive plan. Rebecca did some research on Arthur Zakowitz, Zakowitz. And that we discussed that meetings that we needed one, hadn't, we really hadn't done anything since 1961. And I think from that ground swell was what got to the attention of, of Jim and whoever was the current council members. Unfortunately, I wish we had a little more money that we could have allotted to it because there's a lot of things that need to be done when it comes to the zoning aspect, that's the...
There's actually some grant money.
There's some grant money coming in, but initially, you know, that was, you know, it was a big process, but I wish we had just a little bit more, but at least we've got something that we're working with, we're taking from there. And from that, the different groups have gotten together, Agri, Agribusiness has gotten together, made a report, extensive report to incorporate that into the comprehensive plan. You had the, um, the CAC, you had them, you had the Climate Smart Committees, you had the BSLA, which is the street, Complete Streets, all contributing. And then you went out into the community and the diverse, um, groups and got their opinion. So it was a, it was a good data gathering, um, momentum, but it started from the neighborhood, the ground level. It didn't come from the higher up, it came from the, the citizens.
I remember I was there. I made the PowerPoint.